Three, two, one. We'll pull, we'll play the game.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wasn't cold, by the way. It's beautiful.
It's a nice day.
Oh, there it is.
Seven o'clock in the morning.
May 4th? Is that right?
It is.
What's weather?
Let's see if we can get all this stuff done on time and fast enough.
Okay. Well, nobody told me.
Okay, sending bills around. I don't need any more payroll sheets signed or caught up for the moment.
Good. Through September?
No, through... Through when I get back from vacation.
Where are you going?
To Utah.
When?
Uh...
May 15th, am I right?
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm...
Thank you.
So, I'm gone the eighth, ninth. I'll be gone for 10 days.
Fifteenth to nineteenth, yes.
Only four days, are they inclusive?
Because I'm supposed to only work during the week, so do I have to tell you exactly what days I'm flying? Sorry.
Are you being, uh...
Yes, I am being crammed.
No, what I was wondering is why don't you go for longer? Why, why only four days?
Um, I will be gone for longer than that.
Hey, just a week.
Oh, but if you want to start out on that type of animosity with me?
Yeah, it's a little bit of marine.
That's your last night.
Is it?
Isn't it?
Oh, I don't know. Is tonight my last night being chairman?
I'd like to thank you for your years.
Uh...
The championship. You've done a wonderful job.
Yes, it is.
Apparently, he thinks he's best.
I guess. I'm gonna vote for Richard.
Nope, I didn't say that, did I?
Uh, we have one, um, site inspection report, um, report for Bennett Orchard's first site visit number seven. It was in your meeting packet, if you would approve that.
Who are you here for?
For us.
He's here for us, Prairie Glen Towne Fair Park.
Um, Luke, I did not print out your latest one.
I already did it.
We are...
I have one copy.
I just signed it on the way, this one, I signed it on the way back.
If I have time before seven four... Yes. If I have time before 7:40, I can make copies of the, um...
Since we have him live and in the flesh, can we talk to him about Dirkie since that's on our agenda?
I might, depending on what your question is, I might be out of the loop on that.
Yes, Tom Bigelow's been doing the inspections out there.
From, from his office, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we all might have noticed that it's... Swamp.
A beautiful duck pond.
Yeah, it's a little wet out there. I just was wondering what the status of that was, or you...
I mean, I, I see when the, you know, I'm copied on some of the correspondence between the...
You could ask to return them.
No. Was that for purpose?
No, I do not. No. No. Who's going to the selectmen's meeting on Monday?
All of them.
We are?
Apparently so.
I guess I gotta go. I'm not very likely going. Hi, Sharon.
Hi.
Who's coming to 7?
Um, 7:10 to 7:30.
Okay.
Twenty minute discussion schedule.
Four.
For the master plan implementation committee to discuss and establish an implementation committee. And then they can advertise for four weeks for applicants and then June, uh, first Monday in June. If you can meet jointly with the board of selectmen again on the June 5th, you could appoint members at that time.
Oh, it should be, look, it's right here. Did I, did I ask? Why do we have so much pink paper and nobody's coming tonight?
Just love pink paper. Um, did I miss your vote on adopt, accepting the site visit number seven for Bennett Orchard?
Are you trying to say, did we have that vote already this evening as you said, are we gonna accept that or not?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what you're looking for?
Yeah, you're good.
I don't know.
I think we did.
I don't think we did.
We can. It's well within our purview.
How long are you going for, Mary?
Is the answer not long enough?
There you go.
Mrs. Scott, what would you like to do?
Shall we hear a motion to accept the, uh, the site plan visit number seven?
You haven't done the minutes yet. You go in order?
Oh, thank God. You're right.
No?
Make a motion to approve the minutes February 2nd, 2017.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When did you get?
So, it is carried. All right, so where are we at next? Bills and payroll, we did that. That was out of order. Is that okay?
Yeah, it's done.
I just, I got lost on my...
You got caught?
I have this agenda here, so...
I'd like to make a motion to approve the construction update reports for Bennett Orchard, Dirkie Farmers State, Chestnut Lane, and McIntosh.
Second.
Um, hope, have we seen anything from Dirkie? We just have Bennett.
Bennett Orchard's the only one.
Right, it's the only one.
My error. Strike Bennett, Chestnut, McIntosh. I'm sorry, Dirkie, Chestnut, McIntosh, Lee Bennett.
Okay, so we're gonna accept only the Bennett Orchard?
Well, we only have the inspection report from Bennett Orchard.
Okay. So, we'll strike his previous statement. We'll go with this, the...
Bennett.
The Bennett?
Bennett.
A second.
For a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
So be it.
Okay, we expect, um, Kay to be back in front of you, I think, at the June meeting. He granted an extension on the preliminary, so... He's possibly coming in with a new plan. And I'll send that out when it comes in.
Can we see it before, two weeks before the meeting?
Yeah, it would be lovely, wouldn't it?
Didn't we, we, we started saying we don't get it 10 days or whatever beforehand, then it started?
Yeah, so I'll...
Then that's, that's...
Be back from vacation on, uh, May 22nd. I'll ask to have it, have it by then for the June 1st meeting.
Okay. You get it the 22nd? I guess it's what, eight days?
It used to be, we wouldn't, we wouldn't hold the public hearing if we could get it at least, at least...
Right, the preliminary isn't the hearing, so then we, you, technically, you have 45 days to decide.
22nd, 27th, it'd be fine. As long as we get it before 5 days in the case, it's not a time.
So, at our last meeting, we had some questions about the Dirkie estate, so that's on hold again because nobody's seen it.
Green went out and looked at it again and, and it sounds, are we allowed to have this discussion?
Well, we've got the, um, construction updates on the agenda, so yes.
All right, so we can discuss it. We have time now?
We'll go.
For a few minutes?
Yeah.
All right. It, it, it most definitely appears as if there's one on the farm, I guess it would be the east side or whatever like that on... It looks as if the, uh, the roadway has, has become quite a nice stand. There's nothing underneath it to allow the water out, right? You know what we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Come off a faucet, go up, take the left, and go around and...
It's a dead end over there, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the only thing that makes sense is obviously is to put a culvert underneath to have it, have the water run in the other direction. Or they put so much water in the other, they were pumping it out into a truck and driving it over to the other side and dumping it over by the, by the, uh, the old house.
Yeah, that was their dewatering protocol.
Yeah. So, I mean, that was the first part.
Right, and then what...
The other one...
The other thing that they proposed is to install a lot of the Cape Cod berm that's going in, um, in certain areas to keep the water from... Well, to put the water to the drainage system rather than overland flow towards that pond.
And Green's okay with all that water running down into that and into there and then...
We don't know that.
Well, going through the drainage system instead of overland to that pond, yeah. Tom, Tom took a look.
If I may, I represent the developer on that one, Mr. Scott. As I understand it, the, um, the one detention area that was constructed is the one they were dewatering because it wasn't working properly. And according to Concon, they asked them to take all the water out of it so they could reconstruct it and make it work properly. The other one you're talking about is the farm pond. It's not anything that was constructed by them. It has gathered more water as part of the construction activities. So, they're in the process of working with Concon now to determine what things are creating the more water and whether that pond drains and whether it's spring fed. And they're doing a number of things. So, what they're gonna do is shoot elevations, get a baseline, and then watch it for a while and see if it goes up or down. But as Myron said, as part of that, they're going to berm the roadways so that they can control that no more water is going in it from their construction activities until they determine what's feeding it and making it rise. And I think they've been working with Green, but I know they've been working with their own engineer on those possible solutions.
All right. I think we need to get Green actively involved, not passive involved out there.
They are, um...
I, berming the road is not, when I drove out there, the berming the road wasn't gonna solve what was out there.
If I may, the, my recollection of it, and I'm, I'm only involved when I'm asked questions about it, but, um, my understanding is that, like, like they were saying, you know, the, the, the rain that lands on the road is supposed to go into the closed drainage system. Until the road is burned, it doesn't go into the closed drainage system. It runs off of the road and into that pond. So, they are, if they, by berming it, they'll remove runoff from the roadway and the construction area. There, the, part of the, um, concern that we had was that based on the, the phasing of the project, um, you know, the pond is located here. They are to, uh, construct a road that would intercept flow, that would prevent flow from coming in, um, above that. And then downstream, they also have a road. They put the road downstream but didn't put the road, uh, upgrading of the pond. So, flow theoretically can still come down the site into the pond, but they've blocked off what could have been the overflow. You know, so it's more of a phasing thing where if they had done this part first or at the same time, then maybe they wouldn't have had that problem. But to, to respond to your, um, question about being actively involved, it, part of it is, you know, this is, it's a, it's a phasing thing and it's a, uh, it's, it's, a lot of it is an issue between the design engineer and, and how it's being constructed. Less of what's proposed in general and more of this is what the engineer intended, how they intended them to do it, and whether or not that's being done as they intended it to be done. And that's why.
That's, that's fine, Danny, in, in theory, but let's take a step back. That was a wide open field and everybody told us that, oh, there's, there's not a water issue out there. You put a couple of roadways in there and it look, it's a lake now. It's not a pond, it's a lake. So, why all of a sudden to go from being, there's never any standing water out there, not a problem. You put a couple of houses up there, now it's a lake. That's the, that's the point I'm getting. I don't care if you put a road and you don't put it burned. It's, that's not enough water to, to create what, what's out there.
Right, and, and what I'm saying is, is that it's, what I theorize could be the issue is that by putting that road where they put it, it eliminated the potential for overflow out. So, now, when that does fill up to a certain elevation, it can't overtop where it used to overtop.
But we were told it never overtop.
They built a dam there. That road became a dam.
Right.
Which means it's more than likely to smite it because it, they put, it, it looks like they're taking all the water from the entire site and running all off in one direction, right? It's all running downhill towards the tracks. Yes? Because it don't run uphill.
There's about three different areas where water runs to. And they are working, like I said, with Conservation, who's working with Green. So, Green is actively involved to these solu, to the extent of these solutions, and they're doing one thing at a time. For your, what you're talking about, Peter's, the water going to the tracks, they have a proposed storage area. One of the lots is gonna be turned into a storage area for water to run to that lot. All those things, as Luke is saying, are staging issues, and they're trying to work with Green to stage them in the right order and the right sequence so that nothing further gets too wet.
We don't need more storage areas and more detention, but these were supposed to be...
Temporary storage till everything's built down there.
These were supposed to be detention ponds. These are retention ponds the way they are now. And it was supposedly only an intermittent stream. There's hardly any water there. We, we were very lenient in perking and what, and looking at the water system out there because everyone assured us that it was, you know, there's not a problem out there. This is a field, it's never standing water. There's a ton of water out there. And it's, I, you put that road in, it still doesn't matter. The water always was on that field and it drained properly. Now, it's, you've got lakes out there, at least in my estimation.
Well, I would, I would suggest you really have this discussion with the engineer. I'm reporting to you that what I saw was that they are working...
That's what I'm, I'm trying to...
With the engineer and the Concon and Green to work on the resolution, so...
We need to be more proactive about getting Green out there than reactive. That, that's the only point I'm trying to get at. It's a lot, I, nobody anticipated the problems that are out there. I think we need to be in front of them rather than, oh, we're gonna put berms, and we're gonna put, um, berms up and it's gonna start. It's not gonna stop. But Peter's right, that, that road turned into a dam.
And then every, every solution that the, um, design engineer proposes does get reviewed by Green, so they are...
If you're proposing to...
Which is, if, if the town can't design for them. And so, they, we are working through the process and they've already spent a lot more time on that subdivision than usual, so they are...
That's not our problem, right?
They, right, so they are being, they are on top of, um, more of the situation.
But you hit it right ahead. They're looking at different solutions. Well, if it, if it involves a major, if it involves putting a culvert onto that road, that's a major change to the drainage system that's out there. We need to...
It will also, it will also affect some of the building lots.
Exactly. We need to talk, we need to be brought into that, is my point.
Right, so, but the town's in the position of responding to whatever solutions that the developer proposes, so...
I just want to make sure Green's on top.
Oh, yeah.
And not just being, okay, well, we, this is what we did. What do you think?
Here's the shame on us deal, say, let's, they have this another learning experience and the next one comes in front of us. I want to see a deep hole test every, every, every single lot. As you design it, I want to make sure that one won't fit. One doesn't, you can't make a system sit, fit, it's not a buildable lot. It's gonna be that simple.
It was questionable, but anyway.
Well, anyways, where are we now as far as time wise?
Oh, still doing good. Um, let's see, zoning by law amendments. We had two of them pass at town meeting. Congratulations.
Yeah, hi, Bill.
The, uh, senior residential bylaw. We heard a few, um, issues that were brought up at town meeting that had we known them, uh, at the public hearing or before the public hearing, we would have had a chance to respond to them. But as it is, I'm hoping to, um, tweak the senior residential bylaw, package it next to, um, the inclusionary zoning bylaw and have both of those ready for fall town meeting.
I think we had too much on it. By putting the municipal stuff in there, the big stuff that scared everybody.
No, I don't think that's the reason, because I think that's a necessary component of the senior housing bylaw.
But we can do it by right. We don't need to have it in part of bylaw.
I, I disagree because you're not gonna attract a developer...
The developers that we need to...
Well, everyone's afraid that we're...
I know, but if we can, if we create more information, if we do, if we do an LCTV, you know, publication, and then if we also have a publication to hand out, whether we do a mailer or we have it to hand out at special town meeting.
Aipusarida has an end around to put apartments in.
Right, and that, and I, and I respect their fear in, in why they were afraid it would be apartments. But what we're trying to tell people is this is for people that they create a development where somebody can age in place and, you know, at one point they have an independent living apartment in the building and then they might move into assisted living.
They can stay there forever like Pecanists, as they can say.
Right, and if we do a better job of packaging that as one, Judy already, I spoke with Judy a couple times about this already, and she has some ideas of how to, um, respond to the comments that did come up.
Well, the inclusionary zoning will solve a lot of it because everyone's worried about adding all these housing and putting us under 10%. If we keep that, we put, we do them both together, then there's no way we're ever gonna be in that position.
To be under 10%, making control...
It's fine, we can, I took my lumps. We can do it in the fall.
There you go.
But it's right.
Is there a...
Well, thank God Peter's passed. I, I voted against it.
Huh?
Your amendment passed, the one you presented.
Oh, all right, well, I didn't even know that was even anything to discuss. As far as, as Marx is concerned, I think some of the, uh, the inclusionary, the other one, and I just, I think there was just a slight amount of con, of confusion as to what exactly, they didn't understand, we didn't do a good job of showing them that we've taken the, the power away from Mother Russia, you know, being the state.
Right.
And gave it to ourselves.
Right, I don't think that...
And that is, that's, we didn't do a good job with that. I think that was...
I probably didn't, you know, didn't explain it. I was...
A lot of people looked at it as a Trojan horse because they didn't understand.
Well, it's, we didn't do a good, I, I think we have a very intelligent, you know, base of, of, of population of Littleton. Very, everyone's, it's amazing how smart we are. They are. Uh, I think we did, we didn't do, we didn't do a good enough job.
We were trying to take the control out of the state's hand and leave it in Littleton.
Yeah, I think we just need to, we need to organize it better and, you know, we know the questions that they all ask. It was very common. And I think we need to compose it in a better manner, present it.
Right.
Right.
It's just like, yeah, so...
Right, and, and not forgetting what we heard from the seniors that we were working with on it.
Absolutely.
We should have had them, should, make sure they were there. There were only a couple of people that really even spoke about it.
Well, once we went at the special town meeting, that affected our ability to...
Well, that's gonna be another conversation when we discuss the call.
Eleven o'clock before we even heard it.
That, that was unfortunate.
All right, it was two and a half hours of mindless discussion.
And then I will slide in, uh, the Littleton master plan shipped it off to the printer. It should be back within two weeks, so...
Okay.
The final version is posted on the master plan website. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Conover. I'm from David Ross Associates, and I represent the Home Scout LLC, Foxborough Road. It's an approval not required plan that has some history to it. Um, back in 1995, early 1995, um, we submitted an A&R to the planning board for approval. Um, it was denied because the, the lot we're creating is a hammerhead lot, a reduced frontage lot. And the adjoining lots did not have enough, uh, had only 130 feet of frontage and change, so it was made to determination that they were also reduced frontage lots. So, in, uh, May of 1995, a, a variance was granted by the zoning board of appeals to allow this division. In September of 97, an A&R plan was presented to the planning board, endorsed with the notation on the plan referencing, um, uh, the zoning board of appeals decision. The original zoning board of appeals decision was recorded within a week of its receipt. Two years later, like I said, the, the A&R was signed by the planning board and that's since been recorded. Uh, my client went to pull a building permit for this, knowing that the variance was granted, the planning board, uh, the plan was recorded. And the building inspector refused to issue a building permit because he said action was not taken on that variance within a year of its issuance. Since the plan was endorsed two years after, approximately a year and a half after, um, he felt that that was not suitable action. So, um, last month, uh, we went to, from the zoning board of appeals, the variance was granted, basically the same variance as was granted back in 1995. Um, with the one exception is the butters made us put a deed restriction onto the piece saying that a subdivision road could not be put down the access strip of that, of that, uh, of that, um, of that lot. So, we're coming in again tonight, presenting the same exact plan that was presented, um, back in 1997, endorsed by the planning board. And we're seeking approval under the approval not required statute.
I thought we had that note on it when we did it in 95, too, that there was, couldn't be sub, used as a subdivision road.
There was, wasn't a note on the plan. I don't know if there was one in the decision. But at this meeting last month, they, um, the butters and the board agreed to make that concession, I guess.
Condition.
And it's difficult to condition an A&R. You either sign it or don't.
All right.
But the ZBA, the butters made the condition.
Yes.
So, that's a condition of their, of their variance, so...
If there can't be subdivision access road, there's no other way into that property, you know?
Well, there is, now they have frontage on...
Crestwood.
Crestwood. Why can't you go through Crestwood?
Well, the remaining land does conform with a building lot. Um, it's, we're only here for endorsement of that one lot, not for anything else.
I have no problem, I had no problem with it in 95. Like I said, we met out there, we talked to the butters. I have no problem, I had no problem with it in 95. Like I said, we met out there, we talked to the butters and moved to understanding between the butters on either side that it was only gonna be serviced this one lot. If you go look at the topography there, you'll see that it's, you're gonna be, you're gonna be high pressed to get a roadway and never mind anything else. So it's, we always deemed it unbuildable when we, when we signed it because we're gonna have one heck of a time trying to, trying to access that lot.
What's the reason for it? The topography, the stone?
The tar on hill.
Huh?
Topography.
Topography?
Topography.
So it's a terrific cut you're gonna put into it so you can't have.
But it goes downhill.
Correct. The subdivision road is, it, when those frontage lots were created back in the 50s, um, there was the intention or they reserved a strip at one day, possibility of, of not having that, that back piece of landlocked for a subdivision road. But like you said, Mark, it's, it's an impossible design to get a subdivision road to them.
So the land behind that is, is, it's.
Remaining.
Of 11 acres or something, is that right?
Well, there is to approve lots in Crestfield.
That's correct.
Right. Which are separate from?
No, it's all, isn't it all one parcel?
All one parcel, correct.
It's all one ownership.
And why are these?
I know, man.
Why is this subdivided over there?
Well, they were not, they were part of the Crestfield subdivision, but they were never built because they're.
Underwater also?
Uh, they're, they're tough, a couple of tough lots still.
Those two. There's nothing on either of those two lots?
That's correct.
And then further down is where it goes back onto Crestfield, correct? If you go further down?
I don't think it ever touches Crestfield again.
Well, then why is that? There's a plan that showed it. If they hold those of those two lots.
Those two lots, so it doesn't touch Crestfield again.
Huh. Well.
I guess if we, we did it for the simple reason, if they went to put a subdivision road in, they couldn't anyway because they don't have enough room for the roundings as it is. So we could turn it down if they ever came in for a subdivision road anyway because the roundings around the neighbors and they're never gonna let them use the roundings to, for their road anyway, so. Even though it's practically impossible to put a subdivision road in there. But now that the ZBA has conditioned it with servicing only that lot, I don't know.
It's also right in the registry deeds that the neighbors had them sign off on that, correct?
That's correct.
So regardless of what decision we make, they can't. But if they come in through the backside with those two lots, right?
They're straight up like this. They're up like this.
Alright, does any, do I hear any motions for any of this consideration?
I don't like the motion that we approved the, uh, re-approved the A and R that was done in 1997 um, with the appropriate, um, ZBA, uh, the, um, the ZBA's approval. In conjunction with the ZBA approval of three and nine conforming lots side by side.
Will that suffice?
We're only, we're only here to approve one lot.
Right, we're only approving one lot. You have to do it outside of them.
I hear a motion, do I hear a second?
What, do you wanna rephrase it? Is the plan old A and R?
No, I don't.
It's ours, it's gold, but.
I can't second it, can I?
You can if you don't receive another second.
I second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Apparently.
Doesn't care. No, I'll say aye. Aye.
Okay, why aren't you in favor of it?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I'll, I, I'll, I'll agree with the board. Does that work?
You're allowed to, you say no.
Aye.
Do whatever you want, man.
Jesus.
Okay, apparently you have four ayes.
Two to four.
Um, the plan is there if you wanna take a few moments to endorse it. Boy, would you rather wait till.
No, we can do it now, we don't have time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Jesus.
Problem with it. Your history is invaluable for this board and I appreciate the history you bring. I was curious if that, I haven't seen the topography you've been outside.
They'll never build, I'm surprised that anyone tried to build a house on it. That's why that land is sat there for so long. It's straight up in the air. Everybody, and I mean everybody in the town who looked at it. It's been around for 20 years.
It's the last of his.
It's just.
I'm up.
I was thinking, sure, but, let me try. But like I said, we did approve it 20 years ago.
Right, and that's why I'm here. I just wanted to weigh my option. I was just delaying because I wasn't ready to.
Well, I don't, I did it. I don't want it to, uh.
No, it's a kind of.
The land behind. And those two lots from back there.
I don't think he's gonna be able to. It's, you should look, I'm surprised you haven't looked at it about it, Becky.
Why would I have?
It's, yeah, it should be up.
I don't either. I'm not gonna let it happen. Wanted to try to sell it 20 years ago. I don't want this stuff.
You want to sign one of the.
Papers? I haven't, I wouldn't.
That's in black?
No, that one doesn't. Okay, if I can not, Mark.
That's one of those.
Is it not for a stone?
What is that noise?
It's a voice of the earth.
Sounds like cranks.
Alright, I should've.
You'll have to.
Oh. Who is this?
Thank you.
I do. So, hey, you want us, you want some of the diamonds?
Yes.
Okay.
I want it to stand.
So you have to sign it. I get, I don't know how to do this. What? I get.
I think I'll push them.
I'll try and push them.
Thank you.
He's gonna fall. Enjoy.
Okay, what is this?
Thank you. Okay, so at 7:30 you have the two Cricket Lane A and R.
You're up.
I'm up. So I was before you about a year ago with Mr. Sandball and his wife. And if you see lots 1A1 and 1A2, that was, that's all one piece of property. And the Sandballs had come in here requesting that they be given, granted permission to subdivide or treat it as an A and R. The argument is that Cricket Lane is like an, a lake lot. There are a lot of cabins on it and there's a lot of houses on it. And there doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason why Cricket Lane developed to the right spur more aggressively than to the left spur. Both were being used as camp roads and camp lots. I brought this, um, from the DAS net. I tried to get a Google overlay and couldn't get it. I apologize. I thought the engineer might bring it to me, but I think what you'll see is that the Cricket, see the Cricket Lane right spur is just, was always just a dirt road too. But for some reason, the towns treated that right spur, that little pencil thin line, um, as if it had adequate suitable width and grade to allow new homes to go all up and down both sides of it and to gain their frontage off it. So Mr. Sandball's request is that you consider that the left spur of Cricket Lane is no different and that he'd be allowed to establish suitable width and grade to the point of the lot 1A1, 1A2 lot, um, as you've sometimes done in the past with private ways, and enable him to get the extra lot here. A couple of things would happen. One is that it's serving Fornie, as, as shown on the plan, it's, it's serving the Fornie House, the Paradise House and the Stevens House. All of those homes have been upgraded and built as year-round homes. They're not cottages anymore. And it would allow for a little fire safety and a little enhanced treatment of those homes as well. And the Sandballs have owned this for a long time and they've been, you know, hoping that this would be their retirement, that they would have the extra lot from it, just the same way as the people on that right spur of Cricket Lane have been enabled and allowed to do. So we're here before you asking you to consider it and to.
Well, the, uh, these other houses, you say that they've been allowed to upgrade their existing houses and turn them from camps into houses, just like the Long Lake area in Madawaki. Same idea is what you're saying, correct?
The ones on the left spur, that would be Paradise and Stevens, those were existing camps and they were allowed to upgrade. And to my knowledge, 12 and 11 Cricket Lane, even though Cricket Lane shows as a, as a more developed road at that end, it's still, if you look, I think on the aerial maps and.
Starting with the ones down here.
Number 11 and number 12 Cricket Lane. Those were probably old camp lots too. But if you look over on the right spur, it looks like.
Right spur, left.
Alright, here and here, these are the places we're talking about, right here.
Oh, right here, we're talking about this one right here.
Right, okay, and it already has a house on it. It has been, right?
I mean, she's talking about how this has all been built up.
That's all brand new. They're all brand new homes and they were allowed to be built on. They're not, they weren't camp lots. They were allowed to use that frontage of that pencil thin line of Cricket Lane as their frontage to, uh, to give building permits. The ones down there, the water are all the camps that are rebuilt, uh, Mr. Scott, but the others are brand new.
Right, this right here is 1A. And what you're trying to ask us is to, that you wanna put a new road in, a new right of way.
No, they're asking to improve.
The right of way is there. We're, we're asking to enable us to bring it up to, um, shared driveway standards. Did someone want to, I heard someone say no, sorry. We're asking to be allowed to, to use it for frontage, but it's a right of way, it exists. Um, the question is whether it's suitable width and grade and I'm proposing that if you consider it not suitable width and grade, we would bring it up to, uh, suitable width and grade to the point where it has an entrance to the new lot.
So let me ask you, so when I'm looking, when I'm looking at 1A1 and 1A2 and then you have the grading easement 30 feet wide going down to the back of the other two lots before it.
This is confusing.
It says it's proposed grading easement.
Right.
So it's not there now.
Right, and I'm saying if you do that, you're then granting access to the back of those two lots as well.
No, you could restrict that. I, I imagine that's for septic purposes.
So for lot 1A2, do they need the grading easement to put their septic onto lot 1A1?
Can you do me a favor?
Yeah.
For a second, please. On this one here, this is 1A, correct? This right here, this is all 1A. That's what we're talking about right now. What number is this one right here who is that house right there, right above 1A? Because I don't see where eight.
One.
Because you go from 4 to 12 to 10 to 8.
Right above 1A1 is 4A. He's number 4.
Number 4 is right here, right above it?
Yeah, see the, the.
No, I want it on this one, this, where I can see them all together. This is 4?
Yeah, this curve is the right of way. That, that, the right of way follows that curve and then goes down.
That's what you're proposing, that's what you're proposing now, because there isn't one there now.
Yes.
No, that's.
No, there is a right of way there now. I'm proposing that we widen it. There is a right of way there. See, it says gravel roadway on the map.
This one is 8. That one is 10?
10 is beside.
Is that right?
10 is beside 4.
That one's 10?
Yeah, 10 is bef- beside 4 and 8 is down by the water.
That one's 10.
That's 8. And this is 12. I'd like to be a firefighter, try to find this.
I did speak to the fire department, by the way.
Yeah?
And they said it's, you know, it's, it's bad now. This would improve it. They have no problem with it.
Is that a little?
Is there a space down, a room down there for turnaround at all?
I suppose we could find a way to get you maybe a turnaround or a tee on the lot 1A2.
1A2, you know, you got also parcel A. What is parcel A's deal?
Um, that's just waterfront and wetlands. It would either be, you know, donated or restricted and not build, not a buildable lot. It says, it's marked not a buildable lot. It was not intended to be a buildable lot. I don't, I don't think it's got a whole lot of way you can get to it, but it's down there on the water.
Yeah, it's, it looks like it's all wet. But the 1A1 and 1A2 could access the pond for.
Uh, that's, you know, that would probably make a walking trail at least.
Well, you also got, you said 1.38 acres and, and half of that is, or a quarter of it looks to be wetlands, right? All around here?
Yep, approximately, yeah.
So, I just wanna go back to the proposed grading easement. What's the reason for that? You're saying it's septic purposes?
I honestly don't know. It's not existing. It's proposed, so I'm guessing it would be for septic purposes for the septic system on 1A2. And it's just grading. It's not for anything else except, you know, allowing there to be a, a slope and not a wall to a septic mound.
So in A and R, we can't condition it. I'm hopeful that we can't condition it because I wanna make sure that's not access to the two lots. Down.
Oh. I can have it marked on the plan. That's reasonable.
Your thoughts, Mark?
Um, this is kinda like the problems we've had over the years with Barron Way and a few other ones that were on roads that really existed in somebody's mind or on paper or something like that. Um, the last time we did this was for an older gentleman, and I forget who it was, who was, same thing, was been in his family for a while, wanted to break up one lot. I don't, I forget if he wanted to sell it to his kids or have his kids build a house on it or something like that. And it was kinda the same slippery slope that we have in front of us right now. And, um, the board before you decided not to take any action, not to rule whether it was a road or it wasn't and we basically did nothing about it. And, um, just kinda let it ride off into the sunset, as they say. Because the, the issue really is whether or not there's, if it's really frontage, if it's illusionary frontage, is it frontage that was created over 50 years ago? Is it adequate frontage? Um, we didn't wanna get, really get involved with it back then. So for that particular case, we decided to take no action. Which if it was me, I think this one kinda falls into that way. I would, I'd like to kinda not make a decision on it and let, let Sherry go away.
Mark, what happens when you don't sign an A and R though after 21 days?
Jeez, I don't know, mind, what happens?
It becomes approved.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, but then.
I just wanna pass it off on, on, on a clock.
Okay.
Well, no, the decision either we're gonna make say yes or we're gonna say no.
Well, you have to decide whether that road's adequate and if it has any kind of grandfathering protection because it was built before septic.
When, when were our subdivision rules coming into effect?
1951.
1951?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you, i- if this lot does become approved, um, you have another shot at, um, the access. I believe you'd have another shot at the access because of this shared residential driveway special permit would probably be required because there's more than three houses now on it. You'd be adding another house to it, so you'd have to, um, the builder or future owner would have to, um, upgrade to the shared residential driveway standards.
Well, I.
At a minimum.
I thought that was the understanding anyway, that no matter what we do, that they would have to do that anyway. I think that's what Sherry had said.
I don't think that's unreasonable.
I mean, you could argue that the roadway is their frontage. They may actually own the roadway.
Frontage, right, but.
Right, but that would give them enough frontage to do a, do a lot there.
And, and that's, and that's your decision?
Right. See what I'm saying? They have enough frontage here to include it in their lot.
See this, this grading easement, all this is really doing.
Oh, take the drainage easement off.
No, but what it's doing is really, because this, if you, with the subdivision line that stands, if you moved it over to here, this would become a non-conforming lot and then they'd have enough room to do.
Why would that become non-conforming?
That's my guess. And why, and why are they doing a grading easement if they, if they're gonna create a non-conforming lot?
I think they muddled the water, take the grading easement off. Just get it out of there.
Yeah, we can take that off.
Would that make you happier? I think they could argue that they own the road and that that's their frontage. So it'd be a reduced frontage lot and what you probably should do is give them all the land in the back too.
It's not a reduced frontage lot because it's, it's got the full 150 frontage.
Right, no, you're right.
And then we'd have to come back.
If we determined that that road is a road and that that is.
But if you didn't, you could say that they had frontage on Cricket on the road itself.
Well, that one right. Well, that one right there, you're saying it's one, it says one twenty-seven sixty. One fifty-two, if you put that right of way in there, you've, that does now, this does not have the frontage it needs, correct?
Unless this becomes a road, then it does, this becomes, could be the frontage.
Oh, all right, I knew that.
So the question is whether, forget whether it's adequate or inadequate, because they can make it adequate, is-
Well-
Whether that road existed before nineteen fifty-one, whether it's actually- The problem is you had a million other people do it on these paper roads that were built-
Well, we did it up at, up at Long Lake on Washington Road, didn't we?
Yes.
Which, again, was-
A paper road.
Was a paper road that was approved as part of a subdivision, so that was one of the different categories that you can look at.
This is still a road that was in existence back before zoning, it was in a car path, right?
I, same road.
Back in the old days, when people had summer lots, a lot of them shared the same roadway, because nobody even thought about whether it was a road or not, because as small as you could get through their lots, and that's what happened here, that was, happened at, down at the lake and a lot of places, that there was no formal roadway there. There was a subdivision, but then the people went through other people's yards to get to their lots, because it was easier, because now that roads were built. And that's probably what happened here.
This right here, right? I've got a brain fog. And that right there is this right here?
Yeah. That right there is that right there.
And this is the easement they call it, this is the right. So they're going to say this right here is where they're going to create the new lot. That being, I would rather say that becomes part of this.
That's what I was saying, put them all together.
Yeah, that way, the land parcel, that one is sufficient.
You give them all that enough area.
That has to go away, the easement has to go away with, with no fill easement for, associated with it?
No easement.
No easement whatsoever associated with that. They have to bring this up to a much better standard?
Shared driveway, minimum shared driveway standard.
Is there, is-
With turnaround.
Now, we also had the Baron Way thing, did, what about water? What about, um, fire? I know, as far as getting water for, because you can't turn around anywhere back there, right? You go back in there, it's, it's a nightmare, correct? I think I plowed back there once for my son. There's no, there's no turning around.
I don't know that.
They need to make a turnaround, they need to-
It needs, well, the turnaround needs to be way back in one of these spurs or close to it, right?
You can't do that, this, this doesn't go there. That one only goes to here.
So we're going to make them, we're going to make, we're going to make Cricket Lane?
Because this just goes up to here.
That's not Cricket Lane. This isn't Cricket Lane, this is that little, that's right there.
This is the Baron Way.
Cricket Lane goes over here.
All these houses have addresses of Cricket Lane.
But that's not Cricket Lane, that's a little roadway off, a shared driveway off of Cricket Lane is what it is.
Are all the mailboxes at the end of this road?
This one here, is this, was this in existence before nineteen fifty-one?
Number eight and number ten were, there were been camps.
And ten?
Yeah. And I think there was a camp-
Well, the eight, well, ten?
Ten, eight.
Those are two in the back.
Both of these are serviced by this right way that you're calling it. How do you get around this swamp to get at ten or eight?
Do you see the road on the plan, it shows it?
It goes up that way?
Yeah.
Yeah, see gravel road?
It's a lousy map.
Who did this?
Not here.
And he's sitting in the back.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I still say it's a lousy map.
They have tone after. So the issue is whether or not you can live with the roadway. The paper road that was done before zoning, maybe at the very least make them bring it up to as close to shared driveway standards, with a turnaround. Come on, there it is, right there. This is what we're talking about, right here.
It'll look like it's got, we did, huh? I'll also be getting back to those long side, the doors also stay, I'm going to get to that one, I'm going to get to that one. Maybe it's an accident, you can see the road coming, it's hidden by a tree, it's going to pop out again. You can see it. It goes around the way.
When was that picture taken?
That would have been two thousand thirteen.
Do we have one from nineteen fifty?
No, two thousand.
Look at that.
I might.
Coming back down.
It's all they service out that way, that's Cricket, that's, and all the mailboxes must be down.
Baron, Baron's way all over again.
I have that number eight Cricket Lane that says Stevenson Turner is off a nineteen forty-seven plan. So that goes back that far.
Well, I'm going to go with, if it was, if that road was, if that was there, and those, and someone gave them building permits, and obviously that one, that eight looks like a pretty big house from here. I don't think we, we can deny him it, but as far as the, the bringing up of it?
Oh, yeah.
Without question, it has to come up at least to that profit drainage.
Shared driveway.
And, I mean, really, and I think, I say have Green look at it, too. Make sure that, make, I want, there's a lot of water back here, there's a lot of, that, that is built to withstand it. And I wouldn't mind seeing water go somewhere back there, but that's probably more than we can ask for, right?
So that would be in the, in the special permit phase of this, right? Yeah, it's not a problem.
Well, it's not really a special permit, but we can-
It really is, yeah. Because they, they won't be able to pull the building permit without the shared residential driveway special permit from, from the planning board.
All right, so-
So are we going to redesign this if they do, if you go as a-
Well, we're not signing anything today, right?
Well, you have a plan in front of you that has an easement that you're hoping to have removed or clarified.
Yeah, I don't want to sign something that's on, wait till we get a-
I'd like to see the, the plan cleaned up, so I can see what's going on with it. Our proposal of, of bringing the driveway up to shared driveway status, which is, is that paved?
Twenty-foot gravel road.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be paved, just make sure it's wide enough to-
Has to be twenty.
Usually for surfacing, you run it by the fire department as long as they're happy.
And what about a turnaround on, somewhere on this?
Some way to get a turnaround.
How about if we make that subject to the fire department, too?
Make it, make it subject to the fire department's approval, okay? And then come back and we'll, we can beat this horse to death?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So would you be withdrawing or granting extension on the A and R application?
When's the next meeting?
June first.
Does it have to grant an extension?
Does that work for you guys?
Works for me, as they, we're asking, we ask.
Should we make a motion to grant the extension?
No, they have to ask for it.
She has, she has to ask, then, yeah.
All I want to be sure is that we're granting the extension on the basis that we anticipate with the plan cleaned up, you'll sign it, because that's the discussion tonight. I don't want to have to re-submit and re-argue at all on June first, if that's okay.
Probably, different people hear that?
I don't know, are you going to all get re-elected? June first is fine, may I have an extension, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the extension request.
So June first, I can put up with that.
You good? All right, all of you, first, the second, goes in favor?
All right.
Hi.
All right.
Thank you very much.
It's just you guys just like to argue, isn't it? Why is that always in your verbiage?
She gets the big money.
I don't want to argue, huh? Are we behind now?
Yes, yes.
Well, let's cut to the chase.
What I'm going to do is make a copy of Luke's or last letter.
Do you want to keep this one started?
But you gave it to me anyway.
I gave it to you anyway, you know, I'll sign.
I didn't tell you, that was, was very difficult to see what was all this crap down here, what was running around. You know, the thing is, is that's where I'm looking, is, someone's been able to access that, and use it as such, I don't think we have the right to do that.
I don't either. The paper roads are, they're running paper.
That's still, that's, this is, is paper, this, this is, yeah. Well, I mean, people have been getting it.
Yeah.
Don't worry about me, son.
Yeah, but I have a problem, you mind if I steal some paper from you?
Don't blow your hair back.
Oh!
Yeah, no, get rid of that stuff.
All right, we're here to have a little bit of fun, too, so.
Good, good, yeah.
We'll see how that goes. Oh, no.
Yep, I'm that guy, at least you don't have to talk to Bruce.
All right, what'd you do to us?
Well, good evening, my name's Nick Hallen, I'm an engineer with G P I. First of all, sorry that Bruce couldn't attend tonight, we had scheduling conflict. But I'll try to get you back on schedule. So we're here for Town Fair Tire at five oh one Great Road. Since the last time we saw you, they, we've done a number of revisions that I think will address a number of comments that were made by the peer review as well as the board. And then we've actually submitted and had some conversations with Luke from the peer review engineer, actually as late as this afternoon, to try and address any final outstanding ones. Again, I'm sorry for Bruce's absence, colleagues, I think I know all the key points, but if I miss any, please feel free to jump in and yell at me and I'll answer. Just real quick, I have a couple of plans in front of me. One of them is, let's talk about the architecturals. The building itself, we revised it in a number of different ways, one we've cut down the front A pillar, we've added a couple of dormers on the side just for uniformity. They've continued the man-side roof along the back, as well as included or continued the soffit around the entire building on all four sides. Yes, sir.
Those, those little gables you got in the front right there, the-
Yes, sir.
Down, the next one down, those, those have roof lines running back into the existing roof, correct?
That's correct.
A bird's eye view is what I will, I, we got took once, they're not going to happen again, so I want to see a bird's eye view of your roof line when, when the time comes, please?
Uh, we can get right to that, that is one thing I do have. This was to tie into the roof, talking about, I believe there was a comment about the units, air conditioning handling units and such, and I believe it addresses your concern. As you can see, the dormers on each side, because they're flush and tied in as well as the front.
All right, so the man's roof is, is what, at an eighteen pitch or something, does it have any pitch?
Yes. And I'm looking for it on the plane, and of course, I don't see it.
It's there.
Because your vertical view shouldn't, it doesn't show much of a ridge.
Right next to that, other. You think that's a good pitch?
I don't know what it is, you can draw it as anything. You could draw it as a-
Six twelve pitch.
Okay.
On the gable, and the man-side is closer to, it's like a fourteen pitch.
So these gray things here that you're looking at are actually the sides of those dormers that are side here as well? This gray bump out, this gray bump out, if you look at the dark line coming out.
That's why it's so narrow, the fourteen is so narrow, and then the six twelve.
All right.
Because the overhang is that narrow all the way around. You would look and see more valleys and stuff, aren't you?
Yeah, I want to-
That would look more like McDonald's.
Huh?
The design you're thinking of, when the roof goes back at six or eight pitch.
Well, that's what you just said.
What comes back up you're talking about?
There's an elevation on the next page, if you have the sheet. Little bit, better picture.
How far does the gable in the front stick out from the roof in the back?
It's about twenty-four inches.
So it's a two foot, so it's fake roof coming back two feet?
No, it's not coming back at all, it's, it's coming, it's projecting out two feet. It's not going any higher than the roof line, which you don't see that fake, it's tied in, just like a dormer would come off a natural roof. All right, and you're saying the main, the main ridge, the main roof is, the main man-side, that's a six twelve, right? The six twelve was on the small gables, the man-sides are, are closer to, yeah, fourteen, there's, they're not really straight up.
It's about a fifty degree or a forty degree, forty-five is twelve twelve, so.
I, I think what you're trying to ask is that the peak of the town fair goes back.
Correct.
It goes back to the man-side, there's a roof behind it.
Correct.
It does not come up, there you go, thank you.
That's exactly what it does, it's just a set pitch, but now what we did with the gables, we, you didn't like that, so we lowered it, spread it out, so.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that that's not just a, a fake, there's a roof line, there's rafters going back in, there's a valley.
There's a roof in, in a valley.
Just like that, I don't like that one sticking up in the air.
Right.
That's what you're saying.
We took it, the same, we just widened it up, rolled it, expanded the canopy, toned it down.
Yeah, raised panels is what it looks like, you had to go across some of the, no? You've got a, all right, got your elliptical, that's nice. And it's twelve inches, or twenty-four inch overhang, all the way around the entire building, correct?
Yeah.
All right, from there. All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You don't want to tell me?
No. Is he paying, sir?
All right, what else want to know?
Um, so we also have, we revised the plan to address another of the comments. One of the last was a couple of clarifications to the drainage model. We were able to address those by basically revising as requested by the peer review engineer. What that involved was removing infiltration that we weren't taking credit for to meet any standard, it was more of a natural practice due to the existing soils of the site, we removed that from the model. And with that infiltration not being present, we had to make a couple of other revisions. They all happened in this area here, our model had an error in it where the previous iteration, where the check dam was further down, and we didn't update that model. We've updated the model, changed a couple of things, and majority is related to text. One of the key, key components is the check dam going into the floor base system and basins that were built when the storage units were built. We were already proposing to raise that six inches, we're now going to have to raise that an additional four, so it would be a total of ten inches when all is said and done. There's a couple of other key things that we'll revise on the plan to update. That information also clarify this berm as far as the top elevation, so that as the model reflects all the water is withheld in the, the stormwater areas.
I see you had groundwater at one ten, and they're looking for one twelve?
Yeah. They're, they're, they're not claiming infiltration on, on those particular stormwater D M Ps, and that's, that's allowed.
So a little certainty of where the groundwater is, we have just said, we're calling them wet even though it is above the groundwater, we just can't prove it, so from a regulatory standpoint, where they're saying that they're wet and we can't take the credit for infiltration, although we meet the infiltration elsewhere on the site. Yes, sir. A couple of other comments and concerns, one was about site, the lighting concerns that we discussed today. Since there's actually six site lights, spread two on the side, two on this side, two in the front, and then on the building itself, there's a number of lights, including socket lights around the entire building, wall packs above each door and floodlight, it's hard to see on this one here, above the rear garage doors. We also have notes on the plans talking about that those lights will only be on during normal business hours, dark stock, dark sky compliant, and the fixtures have to actually be submitted for approval prior installation. The last, I think outstanding comment was just a general question about the location of the handicap spaces. We proposed three handicap spaces, two in this corner with a van accessible loading unit, and a third handicap space with a five-foot aisle over in the corner. The question was, why can't we move- The question was, why can't we move that closer to the front door? Really, it becomes an issue of if we moved all three, due to the loading drop-off areas, we would actually have to either make the sidewalk undulate, whether its level come down for one ramp relative to one loading area, and then another ramp relative to the second loading area. We could get away with one, but then that would require the handicap person going into the traveled way around another vehicle into the thing. So what this area, what this configuration allows us to do is have this one area flat with one ramp coming up to this sidewalk and another ramp going up to the main, and allows the entire front to be all at one level. So it's kind of an optimization of both handicap accessibility as well as long handicap accessible, regular accessibility. Uh, I think one of the other comments that we had was a question about due to it being inside the aqua protection, what kind of hazardous or any type of potential hazardous materials may be on site. There are none, just typical cleaning. Besides, we have a letter from the owner actually stating that any quantities would be household items and they will be under certain quantities, such as food nets and other items.
How do we trust the owner to be telling us the truth?
His name's on everything, so you know who to go after.
I know that, what do you think I said? Try to have some fun here, it's, it's not going well.
No, it's not, I'm pretty serious.
No, you're doing all right so far. Did you have enough fun at town meeting? Oh, I had a ball at town meeting. Are you done, Troy, or do you have any other questions? Oh, we got, we got all kinds of questions yet to come.
All right.
But as far as, oh, I'm terrible with names, I'm sorry. Luke.
Boucher.
What, uh, how would you like to fare in on this?
Sure, I can just go through some of the comments like we usually do. We, we kinda highlighted some of the items that require.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask you a question.
Sure.
Luke, we just received a packet from the conversation that was going on today, May 4.
Sure.
I've read, if anybody else has read the original first two question and answer session, can we jump to the today's conversation?
Sure.
So we can brought up the speed on that. Would you mind reviewing the May 4 emails that went back and forth with us?
Sure, the May 4 emails essentially covered those items that Nick just, just discussed. You know, it was the, the location of the handicap spaces, the site lighting, and we had several stormwater comments. It was nine, 10, 11, and 18 were all stormwater related. And as Nick discussed, as Nick mentioned, he made those changes to the stormwater model, and he resubmitted that, that post-development condition stormwater model for us to review today. It appears to have addressed all the comments. The, the only changes in going forward in terms of stormwater that would be required is, as Nick mentioned, the, there's one elevation on that plan that needs to be updated based on the revisions that they made to the stormwater. And that stormwater report where they submitted just the portion that was modified, they should kinda put it all back together and submit it again as a whole.
The whole back.
Saying, here's the entire revised stormwater report. And, but other than those two things, stormwater wise, I think everything has been addressed. There was one comment that we had about test pits in the area of the subsurface infiltration system. We agree with the applicant that the test pits, you know, they have test pits surrounding this area. Those all indicate that soils are favorable for infiltration and that groundwater is sufficiently deep. It's not practical to perform test pits there now as there's leaching, there's a septic leaching field there. So what we proposed was that during construction, they perform confirmatory test pits in the location where they are proposing that. So, you know, they're already gonna have it opened up, but, you know, they'll confirm soil texture and depth to groundwater so that they can, we can have a little additional assurance that, yes, this is going to function as intended in this specific location.
And you see no issues with that?
Based on, based on the test pits surrounding it, I, I don't.
Okay.
And there are a couple of other items in here that are. Sorry, I didn't get it marked down. As we often do on these, the, we recommended the board include a condition requiring that they submit their stormwater pollution prevention plan and the illicit discharge compliance statement. Those were comments 20 and 21. That's, we, we often request that you guys include those as conditions just that they be submitted prior to construction. One of these, number 22, when we were on site, and, and my, we'll recall this as well, we, so the comment, initial comment was that they claimed a waiver from the fee based on the mitigation for trail system improvements. And my understanding is that that's for the, the, the existing trail that's on to the.
Storage facility?
Yeah, right, over there, yeah, around the other side of the storage facility. And when we were on site, that, that trail doesn't appear passable. So what we had, we had just deferred to the board as to whether or not, for a determination on whether or not you guys wanna waive the fee or if any trail maintenance might be required.
What about parking lot, the parking spaces for, we'll waive the fee if you put in a couple of parking spaces for.
Well, instead of, she's got adequate parking, I don't think we should add more parking. You wouldn't have an issue if a resident in the town parked there to access the trail, I guess.
No, it's a work.
Right, I mean, I could, it's a small trail, it doesn't go very far, it goes nowhere. I can't see more than one or two people trying to use it at any one time. Maybe a couple needs to go for a walk, again, other than that, I can't see it really being used. Maybe we could ask conservation, if you guys wouldn't be opposed to establishing the trail again, and then we could ask conservation to assign a land steward to maintain the trail.
I just wanna input, the water department took stewardship of that trail now for conservation.
Uh-huh.
And, and I would certainly approach the water department and see if they wanna maintain it and take stewardship.
Okay. Cause it was, it was granted to the town for access to the well, right? The, the stewardship.
The water department.
Right.
Under custody of the water department, yes.
Maybe we'll talk to Kevin.
Yeah, the, the trail is still in place, it's just between the, it's, it's overgrown at the moment. With the high water.
We'll put that request into the water department. Well, I think, I'm comfortable waiving the fee as long as there's no issue with.
What fee?
The transportation and pedestrian, the parking fee, based on the number of parking spaces.
And what do we base that on? What's the amount per, per space?
Um, 150, I don't know, I have to look it up.
How many spaces are there? I thought it was 110, but how many spaces? What have we, what have we been designating that money is, can, can go towards? We haven't specifically designated anything for that amount yet, correct?
There are 58 parking spaces.
58?
That's correct.
What's the math? That's 5,800 dollars and 100, correct?
100, yes.
And 100. Okay.
If I may also, Mr. Chairman, we spoke to the Chief King today about some mitigation for radar units. And I feel if we could have the fee waived for the parking mitigation, we would, we offered to give him $3,000 for additional radar units, which is what.
That's a deal you made with him, it's not with us. That's a deal you made with him.
I made a deal with him, I told you that he was the, he, he requested the.
He requested that.
Now you're having fun.
Now we're having fun.
Also, just since we brought up the water department, there was a meeting today about the request to install some monitoring wells, which will be added to the revised plan. There'll be two monitoring wells in this relocation.
That's your dime, don't give me, that's the only credit for now.
It's for the benefit of the town, sir.
Your benefit.
But, you know, we don't have any issue if we wanna help clear that trail once and, you know, in lieu of the parking fee, we'll clear it once, we're gonna be out there working, we'll clear it, and then if they maintain it, that's no issue doing that.
Well, I could pay a guy 40 hours a week to do that for about 12 weeks for $5,800. So I'm not in lieu of, of, of waiving the entire fee. Those, those are, the transponders, is that what we're speaking? Is that what you're asking for from the chief?
Radar guns.
Wait, that has nothing to do with this building.
What?
That has nothing to do with.
What has nothing to do with it?
Radar guns.
No, that was a conversation she had with, with Chief King.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with us.
Yeah, it shouldn't have, yeah, it shouldn't have any to do with us, that, that's.
Not saying it does, if you, you wanna, you wanna institute the fee, we'll pay the fee.
Yeah, I don't think.
I'd like for, for it to, the fee to be reinstated.
Instituted?
Re, reinstated.
Reinstituted on all issues without, it's not even a question of waiving it anymore. And I'd like the money to, to be honest, if you go to either elderly housing, the purchase of, of something along that line is what I would like to see it. And I'm not, not sure we can, which, what is that?
That's, that's the policy that was adopted.
Oh, I didn't read that, did you?
We can't really.
We can't designate what? And determine where it goes?
Well, in, in the policy, you designate where it should go.
Then we can. In each instance, or?
No, in, in the policy, it says for, what, pedestrian or transportation improvements?
Correct.
Right, those aren't really.
So you want more sidewalks?
That's it.
Bicycle paths.
That's what we can make the money attributed to.
Why don't we work it out halfway with them? You, you help us with them.
You clear out the, the path on the way back and we'll cut the fee in half, and you'll donate that towards whatever we're permitted to donate for. That way, the labor that you're gonna install, do to upgrade the path is minimal in comparison.
Yeah, I'd agree to that.
Is that fair?
That's fair.
Thank you.
We're good. Making friends all over the place.
Yeah, we're looking out here, people's not throwing things at me, then we'll see how it is.
Well, since you're in a deciding mood, one of the last things that I think.
Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
I'm not done with you.
As they stated, they submitted that letter on the, the quantities for the hazardous materials or.
Lack thereof.
Or their lack thereof, I haven't looked that up. Monitoring wells, which was just discussed. So this was that one related to the request from the police chief in an email today. The, the police chief requested a crosswalk, or two things, a crosswalk that would, a tap that would go from the police station side across to the town fair attire side. And the second one was purchase of additional handheld radars for traffic control and additional sidewalk funding elsewhere in the community.
So can I, can I have a discussion? And I'm okay with you guys saying no to it, I'm just curious to why you don't wanna provide money to the police department for handheld radars as opposed to bicycle and pedestrian paths?
I would rather see money go towards bicycle pedestrians.
That's my question.
The police department has a huge budget, they can afford radar, radar guns.
I would agree with Mark on that.
This has nothing, there, there's no linkage to the.
I just think it's important that we make it part of the record when we talk about it.
There's no linkage to them coming in and needing radar guns. They, they're asking for mitigation from the parking fees, which go towards fixing the, the.
Pedestrian paths.
Pedestrian paths, doing sidewalks and stuff. We take that money, put it directly towards it, that's.
So some of this mitigation money could pay for the crosswalk that their chief is requesting.
Well, I, I have no problem with the crosswalk.
Could we actually weigh in on that? I'm sorry, what's that? Okay.
I just don't see the linkage between radar guns because the police chief wants radar guns.
Right, no, I'm okay, I just wanted to have the discussion in public, so we don't just say.
I'm not the only opinion, I mean, if you think I'm wrong.
I don't, I just wanted to have a discussion.
Put it out there.
So people understand why we're not giving the police station radar guns.
You think I'm gonna get caught in a radar gun, what, are you crazy? Right out. My point is, there's no linkage, there's no linkage to what they're opposing to do and what they're trying to waive to radar guns. It's sidewalks, it's improvements and that kind of.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'll let that go for now.
Okay. The comment 30 was about the, we deferred to the board for your determination on whether you consider the building, there's a requirement in the zoning regs that it should be pedestrian oriented and moderate scale. That's, so we wanted to leave that up to you to make a determination on.
Could you, could we? Could we see the rendering of the front facade again? While we're talking about comment 30.
All right, there's, there's, there's what we see right across the street.
Yeah, and I'll tell you what, it's scaled, in my opinion, from what we saw on the first proposal. Well, it's scaled way down.
Yeah, that, I think is much more attractive than that.
Yeah, I would agree.
We agree, we, actually, I like that, that doesn't go above, so.
Things go and wind up my skirt.
Yeah, it is.
I even like it better than, than all three of those. Uh, the, that is what we look at as you drive by. On the right-hand side, we assume is now the point, as we're looking at, okay? Can you show me what, what I will look at if I was parked at the point parking lots? Which one is it? That one? There's, there's no bays on that side whatsoever. The bays are all, are gonna be, just two.
Bays, they face the wetland directly.
Well, and that, that is the back of the building.
Correct. And this faces the storage units.
The storage units. Is there a way that we can make, and I don't really want fake windows in there like the, the building next to you? It's just, it's so much, that just looks so plain, yeah. That one there, it's just as you drive up at it, you know, you, so what you see to me is, is that's a large expanse of rock. You know, it, but I realize what you got going inside, you can't really have windows all over the place inside of, working the racks.
These are the racks, there's racks there.
Okay.
And you would hope that some of the, if you're talking about the view from Great Road, you would hope that the landscaping would screen that to some extent as you drive.
The, the, the front of it from Great Road looks nice, it's the, it's the, the, the east and the west side is what I.
Right, yeah, I'm just.
Landscaping should screen that.
As you're driving down Great Road.
All right, one of his comments about the, how much, what, I don't wanna interrupt you, Luke, I'd rather have you get.
Sure.
Are you close to, to finishing?
Yeah, close. Yeah, as you're driving down.
Remember to go back to that for a second, please.
As you're driving down Great Road, there, there is some landscaping out at this corner of the property here and through here that should screen that a little bit.
Okay.
In terms of driving down. You know, it all depends on the maturity of the plants and trees, but, you know.
Can you designate something that will?
Yeah, I can actually, if you, I can put a window on that south elevation. Not the whole way, but probably right to, probably centered underneath that.
That would be nice, break it up and then, that way the, and then put some arborvitae's or whatever, some large trees that would grow in close or start them out at, you know, 10 or 12-foot trees to begin with. I realize it's, I just don't want it to look like hell. It's not exactly something we were hoping to go in that, that place, but it's, and again, I, truthfully, that's right by my tires. So I like the company, they've been great every time I've used them, but.
That was going with a postcard.
No, that's, you're right, but it, it, the issue is that I don't want, I drive by there every single day, five and 10 times a day, so I wanna look something that's a little nicer than the building next to you.
Yeah.
And I, I would just say that the landscaping plan has been reviewed and, and updated a little bit.
All right, so they're changing those non-indigenous plants and making them tighter together?
Yeah, they, not, the spacing, I don't believe the spacing was changed, but the, you know, that spacing was ideally, we would, we would have liked to push it together, but their intention is not to necessarily create an entire.
Jungle, yes.
Let them mature, they'll fill in.
Well, you don't want things growing up real high in the front of there either way, cause you still wanna have your view of your building so you know it's there, right?
Well, I think the construction of the building will actually help the, the view. If you look behind you, there's nothing going between the entrance to the point and where this building is going.
Right there.
Right, so that's actually gonna grow up to actually screen that rear south elevation. And then the proposed landscaping in the front right corner kinda covers up the rest of it.
Well, I think with a window there.
How far back is your, is your building from the road, 100, 100 feet?
No.
The building from the road itself is just under 70 feet.
Did we grant a variance on that?
No, that's one of the.
Part of the request.
No, that's one of the requests. One of the requests.
It's supposed to be a hundred.
Eighty.
Oh, it's more than that. I realize what the other one happened, and I know how that occurred. And I asked the question, and if we go back to the minutes that I said, if we're granting this for this one in particular, because it went to eighty, and then you said, why don't you go to sixty, because they opened up the, they widened one-ten.
Right.
So where, widen, you know, they were at a hundred when they started. And because they widened the road, then it went down to eighty. That's what it should be, right now, it should be at eighty, the other building.
It's a done.
You can do anything you want, but live forever, but yeah. What is it now?
It's sixty-nine and change. So this is a plan, this was the original line, here, the original property line.
Okay.
Prior to the taking, with the eighty-foot setback, and you can see, this is our proposed building here. This dark line here that's actually forward.
That'd be you. Where is the self-storage place? Where is it?
Right there.
The self-storage is these grayed back, the hatching, which is actually forward of the proposed building for Town Fair Tire. And the last part of that is that this large box here was actually the original permitting of the sports complex, the indoor soccer back in two thousand four, two thousand five. So what you'll actually notice is, you have the eighty-foot line from the original, and then that eighty feet came back, and this is all the area of the roadway improvements. So we're actually meeting, we're behind the self-storage, we're behind previous permits on the property, and we've actually complied with the eighty, if not for granting that relief to the.
But still, eighty isn't what we had for a setback regardless, it was a variance granted.
Was the special permit granted by the planning board, yeah.
Where we usually want it, how far back is under most circumstances? A hundred?
I think this is, in my opinion, it's a circumstance we can live with, because it was created by the widening of the road. You've got structures.
To eighty, but now.
You've got structures already on site that you're going to affect.
But also, the setback changed, because the rezoning of the front of it went to commercial, so there is no difference from one zone to the other. So there is, the eighty feet really goes out the window. Because the eighty feet was because it was going to be residential, and it's not residential anymore, it's commercial. Those two house lots are commercial now.
Across the street.
Across the street, so that's what this eighty is supposed to be protecting them, because they were residential, they're not anymore, they're commercial.
Also, there's a number of other items to move the building further back, or eighty feet from the widen-taking, whatever you want to call it, has some other effects on it. To meet the bylaw, the wetlands here pushing things, maneuverability to meet the regulations to have any garage doors, things like that, in the rear of the property for maneuverability and things. If we start pushing this back, we start losing real estate, and then we'd actually be looking to put those on one of those sides, which I can see none of you guys like, to begin with. The other is not detrimental.
We wouldn't be blocking that other building. If you push it back, you're going to see that, huh?
The other part is not detrimental to the surrounding, whereas.
Can't get at this.
Yeah, the other part is that, exactly, you jumped the track there, there's only two developments here. You have Beaver Brook and a large field, so there's no buildings going next to the storage unit, and there's no buildings going well over the access road. So holding that setback and not granting that special permit would actually put this farther back for.
Make your work harder.
Well, it'd give me more work to do, wouldn't say harder. And then also, the last is actually the connectivity to the other site, pushing this back, due to this building already being here, it changes the configuration and also the circulation of the entrance from one property to the other, which may actually mean that this is not adequate for the entire development, so we might be looking for another curb cut. So there's a number of reasons to try and support this special permit.
Make your life much easier.
What, the best one, it blocks the other building?
I mean, it does block.
That horse has already sailed for that boat.
It limits, it limits the extent of that, you know, pushing, you would essentially, because of the access to the bays behind, it would push that entire parking lot paved area and disturbance out further into some areas that are already constructed as, and functioning as stormwater BMPs, and potentially, you know, out into areas that are, you know, there's a conservation restriction out there, and it's further into the buffer zone.
You're repeating the dead horse.
I don't know, but you understand what, you know.
I understand what you're going for, but you understand that it's actually a benefit to keep the building.
Well, it's a benefit to them.
It's a benefit to us, too, we're keeping the building and the structure away from the wetlands.
Or the building doesn't get built.
Building gets built either way.
Well, there's other issues.
So there are a couple other items.
We're still fishing.
These are, the majority of these are whether or not you guys like the way the building looks, and whether or not you feel that it is. Whether the structures, parking pathways, and other pedestrian amenities are designed to maximize ease of pedestrian access, those are just in this, in that, in the special permit requirements, those are the items, and it's, they're not as straightforward, so as a result, they require a determination. There are a couple, we already discussed the mechanical equipment, and from our review, we don't necessarily see a problem with that.
Need the screening. Luke, thank you for jumping forward and leaving in that one with us. Are you complete, or do you have more?
I got, I think I only got, well, one more, and then the two waivers that they requested. The other is the, technically, the way it's written, it says, you know, to try to minimize large parking areas in front of the building. Our interpretation is this is not a large parking area, but, you know, it's not, it's not as straightforward, so.
Okay.
Respectfully refer to you guys. And then we come to the two waivers that they requested, one for the requiring all main entrances to have access from the sidewalk, and the other, well, I guess in terms of that one, we don't necessarily see a huge benefit for that, this isn't really a pedestrian heavy use.
No connectivity either.
Right, so we don't necessarily see the value of having, you know, an opening from the sidewalk through the landscape area to the front door. Similarly, the other waiver request is bicycle parking.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like you're going to have a whole lot of bicycle traffic to this type of use.
See, I drive my truck in with my bike in the back, and then I take the bike out, and I pedal home, and then I come back and get the vehicle.
That's what God Made Kick stands for.
But if that's the case.
Really, then you have your bike, you don't have, you don't need anywhere to park it.
The other one catching on real quick. And I wouldn't make it to the cross of the police station before I passed out.
It's downhill.
Huh?
It's downhill.
Good run at it. Okay, so those are the two waivers.
Yep.
Our next thing is, we're going to come after is, do you have any questions on what we've discussed so far, Jamie?
No, I just, I guess, I, we keep referring to that building next door, so I want to make sure, whatever we see, like, that's, they get their feet held to the fire, because I don't know, it was long before my time with the storage unit, but, I mean, nobody likes the looks of that, and.
No, I made a mistake.
I think this has a.
We trusted the guy.
This has the ability to kind of blend that and cover it up if you're going west, and, because like you, I go by there about fifteen times a day. So I just want to make sure whatever this board agrees to, because I know that, you know, it's going to go through no matter what, that it's what we see and approve, and nothing.
Nothing's no matter what.
The material that used are all these materials, that's the exact material.
Yeah, I think Jamie's getting at is, whatever plan is submitted and approved, that when you get your building permit, it gets checked by planning, to make sure it's the same plan that we approved. I think the issue, some comments that we've heard from the longstanding members, is that it isn't exactly the building that you thought you guys approved.
No.
Yeah, I agree, it isn't what we, what they told us that we're going to do.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, the plans that we approve, when they apply for their permit, that it gets a quick look at planning before it gets submitted to the building department.
So we're going to get it, we'll get it.
Am I right, Jamie, is that where you're?
Yeah, you know, we, we want, what you've done, what you've drawn there, I think is fantastic, it fits way better in than anything else that's there, we're still trying to keep a small-town look about us. I like the fact that you're going to, you'll do, I think you'll do what's right by putting trees large enough and close enough together to hide some of that view, the window on the side's great. If you get one on the other side, or if it's a door or something to make it look nice, that'd be cool, too. You could break up the brick with a, like a chair rail of something that, you know, one set of bricks or two set of bricks, and it changes it so it's not all red the whole bloody way, that would be nice if you can work that in. It's not something you really have to do, but it'd make a long way as far as happiness goes. We got to work on the, on the sign. I was going to get this, as far as, I don't know how you guys feel, I like this one the best out of all of them.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, hey.
We got lots of big ones, right?
No, I don't like that. Get rid of that one. No. I'm just going with me, no, what they say later is going to work. There we go, now we're cooking with Crisco. I like that the best. And I'd like it to have exterior lit, not interior, I don't want, I don't want to see a plastic one. We are going after a new signed bylaw, and that's going on our agenda. This year, we're going at it, and it's.
Doesn't the new chair set the agenda?
Say what? Doesn't what?
Doesn't the new chair set the agenda?
Well, here it is, I'm still, you know, this chair hasn't given up yet. Remember.
Ten more minutes, can we get it through in ten minutes?
That's it, we're going after it. So how do you, what were you going to tell them?
Downlighting on it.
Yeah, with some lights that shine back that one out.
That would be nice. Please.
I don't have a problem with that sign.
Do you?
I like the one above it myself.
The round top.
More old school, yeah.
That's more old school.
The old boys didn't do a lot of radiuses, it's a lot of work.
One of the posts, simple, I like.
Oh, the one between the two posts?
Yeah, I like that myself.
Anything's better than what you proposed before, how's that?
Okay, now, as far as the signage on the building.
So with the revision in the dormer, this is actually being shrunk down to fifty square feet.
Okay, and how is that lit?
It's backlit, it's lit inside the sign.
In plastic?
It doesn't have to be plastic, but something that lights up when you put a light behind it. Yes, plastic.
It's a painted metal.
Okay, it's not going to be illuminated from the inside, like.
It shines, somehow it shines back, and.
So the back, the back of it will be lit up and it'll.
They call it a halo lit, is what I think they call it. And you'd see just.
The white.
The white, the outline of light.
Is there one around that you, that I could drive by to make sure that we're on the same page?
Burlington, Williston, Vermont. Williston, Vermont. Williston, Vermont.
Oh, I know where it is, all right, I'll take a trip and look.
He goes there a lot.
So, how do you guys feel about the lighting of that?
If it's backlit with a halo effect, I think that's pretty good, it's a metal, it's a metal sign.
Not a lot of signage, a little bit at the front, and the sign out front, that's more than adequate.
I mean, you can go with, right across from the police station, people will figure it out, right? Good service, good people, people come back. How am I doing? No, who wants, never mind.
I think we're done.
Anything else? Any issues over there? You have any questions?
I have nothing.
You're good. You're up, future maybe chairman.
Do you want to close the hearing and vote on this?
I suppose if we must.
So, I just want to make sure that.
Oh, now you, now you got, go ahead.
Jamie, you like the sign with the two posts, he liked the sign with the crown and dental detail. I like the sign with the crown and dental, because I think it's the only one that you can put the signs, it would come out and down on it, so that's why I would select the sign that he picked. Mark, will you?
I like the square one, I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with any of them. We're all in keeping this. It's better than what the first one was.
I just want to make sure we're all in agreement before I make a motion to close and approve.
So would you like to make a motion?
Is there anybody in the public who wants to make a call?
No, they're all gone already. The one lady that was here left, she had a flat tire, she had.
Like to make a motion to close the public hearing regarding Town Fair Tire and 501 Great Road, special permit.
Second.
First and a second, a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we've got to close it. Now we are going to open up voting, is again, is that, how do we handle this after a year?
To improve the site plan and special permit, with the conditions that we've discussed, one of them being the sign that was presented to us, the.
Windows on the side.
Windows on the side, enhanced landscaping.
And I think if you just refer to Luke's letter of May fourth, that includes everything else we discussed.
The agreement to repair the path in lieu of the fee.
Not the fee, half.
Half the fee and the rest of the money to go into, we're putting it sidewalks.
Pedestrian.
Pedestrian.